Before we start the meeting, we do need to announce that we have three speakers this evening. One speaking to a non-agenda item. You'll be allocated three minutes to speak. Two others speaking to an agenda item, and you will each have five minutes to speak, so. Call the meeting in order, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Before we start the moan of silence, I just want to take a second to say thank you to Mr. Schalkefer. Tonight is his last board meeting. He will be retiring after forty-three years in education, and I just want to thank him for his mom's. I said over, over. Forty-six is more than forty-three, Larry. See, he can't just sit there and just let someone. But I just want to thank you, appreciate all you've done in the district, all you've done in education, and we're better because of you. Just want to say thank you, and best of luck to you and Jill. A lot of fishing and shopping, I'm sure. So, thank you. Next item will be the moan of silence, led by the Vice President, Mr. Jerry Denton.
As we begin this meeting, let us pause for a sixty-second moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or engage in other silent activity. Thank you.
Next item will be the pledge of allegiance, led by fifth grader from Country Lane Intermediate, Asha Pallett.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Asha, thank you for being here tonight. You did a good job on the pledge.
Thank you.
Have you had a good school year?
Yeah.
Do you know how many days are left before you go on winter break?
No.
Well, that's good. You're just enjoying every day. What's your favorite subject in school, or a favorite activity you've done in school this year so far?
Reading or social studies.
Awesome. What's your favorite book?
I don't have one. I like a lot.
A lot of them. Who's your teacher this year?
Ms. Scott, and my switch teacher is Ms. Williams.
Good. Are they good teachers?
Yeah.
That's awesome. Awesome. Thank you for being here tonight, and.
You have any special guests that's here? Anybody that's with you?
My mom and dad and my sister.
Well, Asha, we're so glad you came. Can I get a picture with you tonight?
Yes.
Awesome.
Good job, Asha. Next item will be the approval of the board meeting minutes from November the eleventh. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Ms. Thompson.
Did we get a vote button? You taking manual votes on this?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
That's fine.
I'm showing Ms. Dolan.
Yes.
Ms. Dolan, are you testing me?
I have number five. It says, Tara Thompson will present.
I have Jenny Dolan will present.
I can introduce Ms. Dolan.
Okay. That's odd.
So, tonight, one of the things on the agenda, that's all right. You're just really testing my abilities tonight, Mr. Allen.
Same item, just says you down.
On the agenda tonight is a presentation from our Broken Arrow Public Schools Foundation that has some very exciting information about teacher grants, which is the highlight, I think, of the things that they do in the fall semester. And so, with no further ado, our president and vice president, we've got Jenny Dolan and Charlotte Lane here tonight to share with you some very exciting information.
Tara, will you follow me around all the time and just introduce me wherever we go? Yes, we can go everywhere. Yeah. So, we are here with some exciting news. You know, one of the most heartfelt things that the foundation does is our teacher grant program. And so, we are super excited this year, as we are every year, to help our teachers out in the classroom. But I want to share with you, we had seventy-nine grants that were submitted by the district. And the combined request was eighty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars. The Broken Arrow Foundation has approved thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and thirty-two cents of those to forty-seven teachers. And so, on the twentieth, we'll be doing our Grant Distribution Day, which is always a highlight. And it's super exciting because we will touch every high school this year, every middle school location, and most of the elementary schools. So, we couldn't give this money away without you and the community, so we truly appreciate all that you do and that the community supports us as well.
That's great.
Do you have anything you want to say?
No, it was a great grant cycle. There were lots of fun and exciting grants that we got to grant this year. So, I'm excited to see them working in the classroom.
Do the teachers know yet, or is it a surprise?
Well, now they'll know, because I just announced when we're doing it. Oops.
But it's a surprise still.
It's still a surprise, because they don't know if they got it or not.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, we always come in, and it's kind of a big hoopla. Hopefully, this year, it won't be on pajama day. They don't like it when it's pajama day or dress-up day, and we come, so. Oops.
It's like Santa Claus coming, right?
Exactly, right before Christmas, too. So, yeah, we're excited.
And I just appreciate the foundation. You know, you've done the grants for years, and you've even expanded beyond that. You want to talk about a few things you're even doing beyond the grants, too.
Sure, I will probably miss something, but I'll do my very best. So, in the last two or three years, we have really expanded. We were doing teacher grants and ten thousand for Project Graduation, and then helping with Teacher of the Year. Since the last two, three years, we have added BizTown for all the fifth graders. We pay for all of that. We're adding Operation Aware this year for all our middle schoolers, which is a prevention program. And there's something else I'm missing. I mean, Read to Succeed. Oh, the Read, thank you. The Read to Succeed program, where we actually put four books in every second grader's hand right before summer to help with that summer slide. So, there's been a lot of work by the foundation. They really, truly value what we do in the community through our educational system, and they really want to be there for you guys. And so, just know you have some loud voices that do support you and care about what you do for our kids every day.
We appreciate it. The grants are awesome, and then you're going above and beyond so many other areas, so.
We've got more to do.
Love the partnership.
Absolutely. Thank you, guys, for everything.
Great job. Tara?
I recommend an approval.
Make a motion to approve?
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, thank you. Next item, Mr. Chitty.
President Allen, Mr. Chitty, or Mr. Perry. We have similar names and members of the board. You know, the most nervous thing I have when I come up here is to say that every single time. Okay, I am honored today to be up here and celebrate the instructional technology team here in Broken Arrow. This is the team back over here. They were recently honored at the Oklahoma Society for Technology and Education for Outstanding Technology Integration District of the Year. And so, this prestige award goes to one district in Oklahoma a year, and it's all about how these people support our classroom teachers, our students, and their success with all, I basically say, anything that touches teaching and learning that has technology associated with it, which is a vast majority of what we do. These people ensure the success at all thirty of our instructional sites. They divide them up, and they have big plates. They work with our teachers daily. From left to right, we have Austin Sweet, Courtney Drydel, Ashley Troyer, Jordan Dunkerson Hurst, and then Rachel Doty. And so, I'm just saying, guys, without a team like this, our district wouldn't be where it is today. And it was really nice to have that recognition from a big state chapter for the team. So, I just wanted to give them some honor today.
That's awesome. And I appreciate their job, because people think of technology as the, you know, the network, per se. And until we get that down from the, into each site, from the teacher, and actually, the student is benefiting from it, it's kind of meaningless. So, you all put the meaning in it, behind it, and it's greatly appreciated. I hear kudos all the time about your team, so.
Awesome.
I'd like to go tell on that as well, too. I mean, you know, Mr. Perry, I think you said it is, you know, you can have the fanciest widget out there, the highest technology, but if you don't use it, then it becomes like a giant paperweight of nothing. And so, having talent. And again, the feedback I've heard as well, too, having your talent out there and be able to help our teachers, employ that technology, put it into their lessons, being able to show the students. Again, I think that propels us into just the future of learning, and you guys are leading a strong way with it. So, hats off to you guys, and thanks for a wonderful team, and that's cool to get that recognition. So, job well done.
I also want to congratulate you and say that, kind of shocked, there's five people back there, and we have thirty sites and thirteen-hundred teachers and twenty-two thousand students, and we got five people that make that happen on a daily basis.
Twenty-four thousand Chromebooks, all our security for our student stuff. They're all Type A. I selected them all very specifically.
That's impressive, and we appreciate what you do. I know you'd probably have to spend a lot of time in my classroom if I was teaching, but we do. We appreciate what you're doing. Very impressive. Thank you all.
Well, President Allen, Mr. Perry, and the board, I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you. Yeah, Mr. Perry. Mr. Chitty, you guys come up here and get your picture taken, please.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you guys very much. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Oh, I should have stood up and showed.
Good job. You too, Mr. Perry.
High five.
You missed that. Hey, you get them on the way back.
I'm just going to run down the line.
There you go.
Good game, good game.
Next item, Ms. Eniff.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. Tonight, I have the pleasure of presenting our 2023-2024 Annual Audit and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report. This culminates about a six-month process for the district of closing our year-end and going through many steps and layers of financial data to present our annual audit. Very proud to present this to the board tonight. This is not only our financial audit, but the audit encompasses so many, all areas of our district, from human resources, payroll, child nutrition, operations. So, it tells our story through our data and our numbers, and very proud to present that to you this evening. I'd like to invite Mr. Jay Jenkins, with Jenkins and Kemper, to go over the management report.
Good evening. I'm just going to cover the three main reports and try to make a real short, not the enigata de vita version, but just the real short report. But the lead report that we have in the audit is the Independent Auditor's Report. And you're one of the few schools that we actually are able to give an unqualified opinion. Usually, we have to qualify the opinion because the schools don't have a general fixed asset account group. And so, absent of that, you know, we're forced to do that. But in your situation, you know, you all provided these CAFRs for probably twenty, twenty years now. And so, they're, just has all the elements that we need in order to give you an unqualified opinion. And sometimes, people think unqualified means not good, but that's the best opinion that you can get. That means we have no qualifications of things that could, that are wrong with them. So, that's the first report. Then, the second and third report, one's on the report on internal controls related to the financial statements taken as a whole. And then, the third report is on internal controls related to the major federal programs. And we rotate those programs so that we're not testing the same programs each and every year. This year, I believe, we tested the, I think it was in the final year, the ESAR funds. So, we tested those pandemic funds, and also, we tested the special ed programs. And both of those were tested as a cluster, so there may be more than one program for each of those groups. And they were tested and related to the internal controls with the financials, there were no findings. And related to the major federal programs that we tested, there were no findings as well. We've really enjoyed working with the staff, Natalie Megan and the rest of the staff in the business department. They do an excellent job, and that's really all I have to say. If you have any questions, I'll try to address those.
With the positive report on the financial statement, how does that positively affect our rating for the rating companies? Does this have a huge impact on that?
It will, yes. So, as we head into our bond season, our FY24 data will be available for the rating agencies to review and to take into consideration as they review our district rating and status.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
We need to entertain a motion to accept.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Ms. Eniff.
I'm tricking you. That's time. So, Natalie covered the larger and the more specific, how about that, Natalie, report, which, if you're a numbers person, it's probably a great read. If you're more of a images, color, pictures, this is your document, the PAFR. So, it's our Popular Annual Report, basically. So, this is a very condensed version of what you just saw in the ACTFIR. And so, I want to just pull out a couple of things that are different in this year's catalog. If you'll flip over to page three, pages three and four, this is some statistics. It's kind of what we call snackable media. So, as our board members, or as our administrators and folks within the community are out and about, and they need some, you know, just, did you know this about Broken Arrow? You know, for example, did you know we had thirty-one school sites? So, this is a great page if you are needing, you know, that quick information that you can give to people in bite-sized, i.e. snackable, sizes. On pages five and six, that's kind of a review of some of the cool things that did happen specifically this year. So, we highlight our Teacher of the Year. We highlight our Support Employee of the Year. But one new thing that you'll see in the catalog this year, in this spread, you'll see a QR code down here. So, we've embedded QR codes that take you to videos that our fabulous AeroVision production crew has posted throughout the year. So, in this case, you'll see our Vanguard recruitment video. As you keep going, you'll see an athletic hype video. You might see our fine arts video. So, it's really that interactive media to give you, if you're not a reader, well, we've got you covered there, too. We've got videos embedded in our annual report. And then, the last thing I'll call your attention to tonight, if you're like me and you like just a few numbers, okay, to tell, see what the story they're telling, flip over to page eleven, and that begins the report on our bond issue, kind of where we're at, what we did last year with that, the amounts, the different propositions. And also, we have a video for that, too. And then, it gets into a very abbreviated version of the financials. This is really the forty-thousand-foot view. This is not nearly into the details, into the weeds that the other report has for you. But again, this is just really kind of a coffee table book for us to have that we can send out into the community so that they'll know a little bit more about their school district. But I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. It's not often that the communication creatives and the financial folks get to work together, but we do get along very well, and we produce really good documents.
Ms. Thompson, is this available online?
It is, yes. And if we don't win an award for this this year at my national conference, I'm going to think that it's rigged, because this is a beautiful publication.
Absolutely, and I totally agree. I love the fact that we have both versions out there that, you know, can allow whichever side of the spectrum you're on to entertain.
Absolutely.
So, thank you, guys, and I hope to see these ongoing. This is nice.
It is, and I love the transparency of it.
Thank you.
Make a motion to accept?
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Ms. Peterson.
Yes. Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, and members of the board. I come to you tonight seeking your approval for Mr. Brandon Carr to serve as the interim principal at Spring Creek Elementary. He came to us about a year and a half ago with a long career in Wagner, but Mr. Carr is actually a Broken Arrow guy. He lives in Broken Arrow. His kids go to Broken Arrow Public Schools. And I can remember during his interview, he had said, "I want to serve the community in which I live." And so, he has spent the last year and a half building some really strong relationships with the teachers there, with the parents there at Spring Creek Elementary. And so, we felt to keep the consistency, it would be wonderful if he could continue to serve. His teachers or the teachers that are there were very, they would be very happy to know that Mr. Carr would be the one serving as the interim principal. So, anyway.
Questions or discussion?
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes, is he here?
He is. He is.
Congratulations, and welcome to your new role. You have any guests here this evening with you? Anything you'd like to say? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, Mr. Perry.
As a school district, we have a slice of being a larger impact on the community in our role with the Economic Development Corporation with the city. And pursuant to the BA-EDC bylaws, we do have to vote to, vote on some members to be approved. One, the first one is Jason Hudson is being reappointed. Brad Hoffman and Jenny Cothran will be appointed as new members of the EDC. Each will serve a three-year term, beginning January first, 2025, and expiring December thirty-first, 2028. So, I ask for your approval tonight of those three individuals on the Broken Arrow Economic Development Corporation.
And this is standard practice. This happened, the city will approve, and the school district will approve for the bylaws.
I make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Motion and second, please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Ms. James.
Good evening. Mr. Allen, now Brandon's got me all fluddled. I'm so sorry. Good evening, Mr. Allen, Mr. Perry, and the board members. This evening, I would like to bring to you some information for your discussion to vote on whether you would like to approve our endorsement for some legislative agenda that was put together by One Voice, which is the regional business advocacy. It's put together by Tulsa Regional Chamber, and they invite businesses and organizations such as ourselves to a group of northeastern Oklahman states and organizations to represent that. So, we came together and had, there were large table discussions where we could talk about what were important to our region, what impacted us. So, we had a seat at that table where we could say, this impacts our students, this impacts our teachers. So, at the end of the discussion, we were given so many points, we could vote on what we felt was important. And then, they sent us their agenda. So, what I'd like to present tonight is just a little bit of a capture of what they spoke about, what, as a group, we voted on. As I know we shared with you, the document, you can see those state priorities or the federal priorities. I won't go into every single piece unless you would like me to clarify. But I did want to touch on some things that I do think influence us as an educational entity for our students in our district. One of those, I thought this was interesting, was from a state priority is modernizing our housing laws. We're only one of six states that does not have anti, I just lost my word, retaliation laws. So, one of our families could complain about safetiness in their apartment or health, and that renter, you know, the person renting to them could say, you complained, I'm kicking you out, and that's legal in our state. So, we have high mobility of students who are moving in and out. And we're not saying it's all this, but I do think sometimes those students that are at risk tend to struggle, and this could be one of those reasons. Infrastructure such as bridges, we have several bridges that are structurally deficient. We're in the top ten states in America of the number of bridges that are impacted by that. And I think probably there's a number of our bridges that our buses and our parents and our families drive all the time. So, that was another priority they wanted to focus on. Of course, at the top is any K-12 funding we can get from the state of Oklahoma. What we would really like to do is increase the funding per student so that we're getting more resources in the classroom, more funding that will help support our students as we increase those literacy scores, our math development. But more, as we've talked about the whole year, it seems like really the recruitment opportunities for our teachers, if we could pay more. So, that was definitely a huge discussion. One piece of that, too, that I think was very important is the fact that the entire One Voice talked about ensuring that we preserve the authority of our school board, our local school board needs to make a lot of decisions, that they don't need to be pushed out. So, that was a huge piece of it that they talked about as a whole, that they're like, the school board should have the determination to make decisions. And so, that, I wanted to make sure we brought that up. Also, addressing our children's mental health. I know we talk about it quite often. We have lost children. We have lost families who have struggled and had challenges. If we do not have the type of access to services that our students need, we're going to continue to struggle. And that's one thing, as a whole, the state, whether it's for our workforce, it's for our families, or our employees, or our children, they need to focus on that. Right now, we just don't invest a lot of money into this issue. And so, it was definitely a priority on the agenda for this group. Last, in the state priorities, was the review of the state-regent strategic plan and really start integrating more things about work ready, really providing more ways, provide credentialing opportunities for our students, but also employees, so that they can be trained onsite, they can, we can be reimbursed by, whether it's the state or the federal level, that we can receive grants that help us ensure that our employees are learning and can build or can move into different positions as they grow. Federally, just a handful I wanted to bring out, affordable to expand childcare. I think that's a huge piece right now. We have a lot of people, after the pandemic, couldn't afford to go back to work, because they had to either stay home and work remote, or they just lost that job because they could not afford what daycare, the number of daycare resources we had available. So, from a federal legislative standpoint, anything the federal government could do to offer rebates or provide opportunities so that we have more opportunities for those families who need that. Also, encouraging more affordable housing, back to the laws. more affordable housing. Back to the laws, we also, they did a research study that we are 81,000 units short for our low-income families of having a home or an apartment of one bedroom that they could afford to live in. It's 81,000 for the state. So, really finding additional ways to encourage that, that there's more affordable housing. Rent is skyrocketing, so to find ways that they can bring that down, provide incentives, that would be helpful as well. And that also goes back, I believe, to our mobility of our students. If you can't afford that, or the price skyrockets after the end of your lease, you're having to move, everybody's having to pack up, we're having to move, and hopefully, we can stay in our, our, our elementary school district area. Sometimes we cannot because of that. So, that's a huge, that would be a huge advantage, if we could do that. Um, and just because I'm a nerd, I'm gonna bring this out, uh, we're designating Route 66 as a National Historical Trail because in 2026, the Mother Road turns 100. So, from historical peace in the state of Oklahoma, I think it's important that we look at that and, and recognize that. But, but again, those were just the few that stood out that I felt like I just want to highlight, but I'm happy to clarify.
Do you feel like the agenda matched? I know, um, you've been very intentional in your role to get to the Capitol, talk with legislators. Uh, we went, uh, last week, uh, to begin those discussions. Do you feel like that aligned with what we're trying to push as a district here, too?
I, absolutely. And everything, I was given so many points. We're given like 50 points. Every single thing I put my points towards were on our agenda. And I only focused on things that I felt from our perspective were helpful, uh, for education. So, I do, I think it's very important. And even when we visited with different, uh, legislators, they know the struggles we're having. We cannot, we are not, we're just not equipped to help some of the students' needs that they have. And then until they invest from a state perspective, it's gonna be difficult for those students to come in and be able to put aside, "I just lost my house last night," or "I'm depressed," or "I have, you know, I've lost a family member," or "I'm in a foster care," and then be able to say, "Okay, and today, we're gonna talk about literacy. We're gonna read this book," and you focus. So, I feel like, yeah, I do think it aligns. I was excited to see what ended up on the agenda, honestly.
Any questions or discussion?
Thanks, Mark. Appreciate the highlights. I, I mean, again, I'm glad to see that it's pretty well across the spectrum there, not just a focus on the business or things like that, that it really bells down into things that I think you very well pointed out to our district, to our state, that's really critical for the well-being of students, employ, and just a variety of different things.
And things that you might not just, um, connect to education right off the bat. And then once you started thinking, I was like, "Oh, that has everything to do with education."
Yeah. Things we take for granted.
Yeah, absolutely.
We're speaking with, with the legislators, what type of feedback are you getting to provide help for mental health? Uh, you know, we don't really have any institutions anymore in this area that provided those services. So, now the burden's been placed, it seems like, to local school districts to pick up to where these facilities, you know, the Shadow Mountains, the Hissums, the many facilities that used to provide services, but now, now the burden's back on the district. What, what are you getting from the legislators to help make a commitment toward districts can focus on educating, and then those qualified institutions or services can be provided by the state?
Right. I, I feel like it's aligning with us because it is just not a K-18 and under. It is the 36-year-old. It's the, the dad that's got, you know what I mean? It is spread across, so that it's just not impacting education. So, I feel like it's almost as if when we speak with legislators, it's, it's a whole state issue.
It is, and that's, you know, we, uh, talked with Senator Haste last week, and he put us in touch with, uh, a lady that's, uh, I forget her title, but she's over that from a state perspective. And we have a meeting with her this week?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
Maybe tomorrow, uh, to discuss that, that it's kind of interesting, because you're exactly right. It goes beyond education. We've got to have some places for these students with some, um, families with some, um, very heavy trauma. We, we lead the nation with A scores, or we're up there at the one or two, uh, which is a indication of child trauma, what they've been exposed to in Oklahoma. And, uh, we, if, if they're not in a good state of mind, they're not going to be able to learn in the classroom. So, it's got to be a partnership.
Yeah, we need help. I mean, I think the stat you had given from 2020, our districts lost eight or nine?
Nine students.
Yes.
Since, since 2020 to suicide. Um, and the district obviously isn't equipped or trained in those areas. I mean, we're supposed to be educated. So, I mean, we need help
Absolutely.
From the state.
And they mentioned that we're doing, it's record highs right now. They had that discussion at the meeting. They talked about there are record numbers of overdoses and suicides across the board, not any age group, just across the board. And I think the, probably the overdose is a, um, self-diagnosing, you know, "I can't get access, so I'm gonna take something that I feel might make me better or feel better." But, yeah, our teachers, and we've said this a lot, our teachers are experts in the field of teaching their content area. Our school counselors are experts in their area, but they are not therapists at the end of the day. They're school counselors. They're school guidance counselors. So, what they're trying to do is help be proactive, get in front of issues, help children be able to learn the skills they need to advocate, how I handle when I get upset, how do I handle when a peer does this, or how do I resolve solutions or issues without it, you know, going into me getting, you know, uh, suspended for something. So, yeah, it is, we do not have the capacity. So, as we're trying to take on more of these things, we're letting other things go because the focus has to come back here. So, I do think we're all on the same page. I think Mr. Perry could attest to that. As we've talked to them, they know how important it is. And if we don't have a workforce to move into these positions that are coming open, uh, with the retirements that'll happen as everybody ages out, um, we're not gonna have a workforce, and nobody's gonna want to come to Oklahoma. So, it benefits, and definitely, uh, they're encouraged by saying, "We need to do something so we can get in front of this, be proactive," so that the kiddos that are moving out, graduating, going to college or straight to the workforce can come in and do what needs to be done and are able to be successful, you know, when they're, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I make a motion to accept?
I'll second.
Motion, second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Ms. Roulette?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Perry. Thank you.
Um, as we begin tonight's, uh, discussion by members of the Hybrid Calendar Committee, uh, there's a couple of things I want to share. We have three committees that will report out tonight, our Support Services, our Student Engagement, and HR. And I want to talk about the why, and again, try to clear up any misconceptions, the misinformation out there about, uh, the hybrid calendar, the four-day calendar. Um, of, you know, first and foremost, the why is to impact students in the greatest way possible, and that is, um, having high-qualified, high-quality teachers in the classroom. That was the whole motivation of even looking at this and trying to combat the teacher shortage of the, um, funnel and pipeline of teachers that is getting smaller and smaller every year. Um, this was not anything, um, I want to reiterate this, this was not anything that we are trying to sell or push. We are just looking at it from a school district standpoint to see if it's the best thing for Broken Arrow. Um, we love parent input. We love, um, receiving that, and, um, that was the purpose of the surveys and going through a committee. Instead of us just making a decision, uh, we wanted to get that input because I don't own the company. I, uh, I, I'm not the CEO of, uh, just able to freely make decisions because I, this is a communities district, and I want to reflect that as superintendent. And this is, um, this is a discussion, uh, to see. And at the end of the day, I could tell you right now 10 things that I think are positive about going to a hybrid slash four-day week, and I can tell you 10 things that aren't good about it. So, I have not made up my mind. We have not made up our mind as a committee. We still have work we're studying to do. I don't even know how it's going to end up right now. And I think that's important to get out there because I've had a lot of people contact me and said, "You all have already made up your, uh, decision." If we had, we'd already done it. Um, I, I've got some great concerns about it. I see some, uh, ways that could help and, um, benefit that teacher recruitment and retention. Um, but if we don't do that, I, I want to mention some other things that we're doing right now. It's not just the calendar that's going to make this a great place to work. We've got to build a great culture. We've got to do things outside of the way things have been done in education. Um, I want to talk about Tiny Tigers, our, our employee, uh, daycare, childcare, uh, that's been very successful and had a lot of teachers move in to the district before that. We've prioritized, um, class sizes, especially at the elementary level, with an 18-to-1, uh, student-to-teacher ratio. Um, we've added assistant principals across the district now that every, uh, elementary school in the district, uh, we've increased the number at the freshman academy, high school, and middle schools, uh, in certain areas so that they can help with, uh, discipline along with adding positions in campus intervention specialists, behavior coaches, and classroom aides to assist teachers and take that workload off of them, um, as best as possible so that they do stay with us. Um, I can also add that our security team, um, we want an environment where teachers and our students are safe every day. They feel safe. And with the addition of our security guards in the district, uh, patrolling every single site, that's a new thing we've done over the past couple of years, that, um, when students and staff walk in that school building, they know that, uh, we've got a team that's willing to protect them, that's armed. And I think that's important. We don't want to look over, um, look past that. Um, also have to say, our finance team and being fiscally conservative of, with our spending and adding, um, unneeded positions, and that's enabled the board to give these stipends to our teachers. So, I don't want, um, this thought out there, "We're just doing this a, as the end-all, be-all." It was just an area that we wanted to look at and study. And again, we appreciate the parent input. We are not ignoring that. We're talking about it. Uh, we spent an hour and a half in, um, our cabinet meeting this morning discussing the inputs so far in our survey, which will go through December 22nd. And again, we want as many parents and people in the community, our employees, to take that survey. So, at the end of the day, we can end up with the best decision possible for Broken Arrow Public Schools, which means our students are getting the best instruction in the classroom. They feel connected to the classroom, and they feel engaged in the classroom. Um, I'm so glad you talked about the mental health part of it, that, because that has been a part of this hybrid, uh, calendar, uh, committee and their research, because we do have to look at some ways to address the mental he- health issues. I know you just said it, but I'm gonna say it again. We've lost nine students to suicide since 2020, and that is just heartbreaking. And we're doing, working with outside agencies to help, uh, partner, and this goes beyond just the school day. It's a lot of family issues, too, that, uh, we're trying to assist with. Um, we've got a behavior intervention program that we started at the elementary level called Tiger Connect to address, uh, our most severe behavior cases of those students that are not able to self-regulate in the classroom. And, um, again, that's to help our teachers so that they can, um, have an environment in the classroom where they can teach and students can learn. And, um, I think we're seeing great success with that. So, um, bottom line, we do have a teacher shortage. This was a way just to look at it, but no final decision has been made, and we're gonna full bore with the other things I mentioned. And I just wanted to talk about that as we start this tonight, to, um, kind of lay the groundwork for these different committee members.
Well, Mr. Perry, I appreciate that. And, uh, I know from a board perspective, when we've had conversations in subcommittee, and you guys have spoke to us about your challenges and filling roles that are, uh, within the district, I think now currently as of December the 9th, you still have 10, you have unfilled positions of 10.
Mm-hmm.
And seven of those being in special ed. Uh, anyone that doesn't think that's an issue, uh, you know, they're just missing it because that is an issue. We have seven special ed positions, so those students and those classes, services are suffering as a result of that. So, when you bring these things to us from a board, from a board perspective, we have general conversations to talk about this. What do we think might be able to remedy this to help make it attractive where you can have 100% fulfillment rate with your employment? Um, you know, how do you, how do you attract and retain the best teachers possible? You know, I asked some numbers for Ms. Dias today, just in preparation to the meeting. You know, in, in 17 and 18, because the emergency certified teachers that you, that a district used to have to get, I know when I taught back in the 90s, it was like impossible. If you didn't have a teaching certificate or certification, you just got looked over and you wouldn't get hired. Well, as of 17, 18 school year, the emergency certified number was 34. As of 24 and 25 school year, it's 129. It's between 9 and 10% of our entire staff in our district is emergency certified. So, that should also be a concern to parents with kids in the district to talk about, not, not belittling them or thinking they don't do a good job, but to have a highly qualified, highly trained educator in that classroom. I think those are questions that we need to talk about, discussions we need to have. And what does that look like? Is it a four-day calendar? Would that attract those people? Is it not? I mean, I think those are legitimate questions to ask. And it's, not that this four day's the answer. It, it may not be, but I think it's worth having a conversation of what do we do? How can we do this to where they come to Broken Arrow, and we have 100% fulfillment rate, and we can provide the very best services to those special ed students that are missing seven teachers and to the other three that are unfilled? Because I would assume you're having teachers miss their planned periods and go fill classes and pick up those caseloads, which is not good on that aspect as well. So, again, I hope everyone in the, in the community and the district knows that we are just having conversations, and that we do have to look, and we do have issues that the district's facing, and have conversations, and us be open as a board to listen to the community, to bring ideas and things to us that maybe be able to help solve these issues.
I think that's great. And I think, you know, going into this, we were not naive. I know there's a childcare issue on those Fridays. Um, the purpose of the committees was to study and see if there's ways that we could alleviate that. Right now, it's looking more difficult to try to solve that issue, which is making this hybrid calendar a, less of a possibility, uh, due to, uh, our study in that. I think you're going to hear that, um, from Ms. Van Jackson tonight, uh, with her committee's work. So, uh, it's not that we wanted to dump this off on parents, saying, "You, you take care of them on Friday." We knew there was, uh, issues with feeding our students. We knew there was, um, issues with just engagement and not being there, uh, on a weekly basis, as many days. Again, we're still going the same amount of hours that we would go in our traditional calendar, but trying to, uh, we're solution-oriented people, and we may not be able to come up with enough answers to, to go forward with this, but we're looking at it. We're studying it and trying just to find a win-win.
Sure.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Allen, I think you guys have, you know, covered a lot of items that I think are spot-on. And, you know, again, I know as a board, in a lot of our conversations, you know, we want the best district in the state. We drive hard to be the best district in the state. We've challenged each and every one of you to come up with, what do we do in order to attract the big, the best teachers that we can have? What do we do to retain the best teachers? And our journey through that over the years, we have made, you know, incremental changes. We made some big changes, and a lot of them you've pointed out. And so, that journey's not over. And again, this calendar review, I think it's instrumental. And, and that committee is made up of, I, I, I mean, I was looking at just all the different people that are involved in this committee. It's not one group of people. It's not teachers. It's not administrat-, I mean, it is, I mean, we've got parents out there. We've got teachers on that. We've got administrators. There's business people. I mean, it's made up, it, it's truly, if you're looking at a committee to try and come up with solutions or ideas, I was impressed with looking at that. And again, I think from a board's perspective, Mr. Allen, you said it, we're not walking into this with some preconceived or preset ideas or directions. And so, I know from me, um, personally, I, I'm excited to see what the committee can come up with. I want it to be a fact-based decision. I want it to be based on what is best for the children. And, and I am confident that in this board, in this administration, in this cabinet, in our school district, the foundation is what's best for the kids, what's best for the teachers, and what's best for the district. And quite honestly, if you boil it down to that, we are going to come up with something. Don't know exactly what it is. We haven't predefined that. But again, I am excited this- But again, I am excited this, and this is an emotional topic. Man, I mean, it's heated. And, you know, that's okay. That is okay.
It is just a conversation.
But again, we've got to be tempered in not making it a personal thing, that we make it a business decision, that we make it a foundational thing that, again, goes back to our three things. What's best for the district, what's best for the teachers and what's best for the students, period. And so again, I think, and I personally feel the committee and you all are doing exactly that. And that's what we're supposed to do. You know, we don't sit back on our laurels. What have we got to do to make this the best district? This is part of it. I rest my case.
Well, and I commend the board for being able to just address a, a hot topic, so to speak, something that's, you know, probably not popular, but at least we're going to have the conversation. It's not saying we would do it or not, but, I mean, it's worth the conversation. I commend us for even being open to that. So, and the committee for the work that they're doing and about to present to us, so.
And I think that's been one of the downfalls of public education in the past twenty-five years is we've not thought outside the box. We've done a lot of the same thing that's always been done. And that's why, just again, the Tiny Tigers, the daycare, our Tiger Connect, those are new things we're adding that have never been done before in Broken Arrow.
Well, to your point, Mr. Perry, is I know that school's done the exact same way today as it was when I was in school in the eighties. And, you know, it was built around that farming calendar. I've lived in Broken Arrow a long time. I don't see a lot of farmers in our city. So what does that look like? Do we continue to do education the same way? Or do we look for innovative ways to move that and what that looks like? So I, I'm just glad we're having the conversation. We can get our community involved to give us ideas of what that looks like and what's best for the community, so.
Good. Ms. Van Jackson.
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. I got it.
At least you didn't call me a bad word. That's okay. I've been getting called a lot of bad words, Rosalind, for us to have this conversation.
Well, I'm going to call you President Allen for this evening.
Thank you.
So it's been a very huge privilege and honor to work on this committee. I facilitate the subcommittee for support services, which includes child nutrition, before and after care, or childcare services and transportation. And our committee is comprised of about twenty-plus stakeholders from across various spectrums of teachers. We have parents, a very large number of parents, some of our administrators, just a very healthy wealth of knowledge and input for us to make this decision as we discuss what's best for our district. So I want to talk a little bit about our approach to this. One thing that we've looked at is taking all of the information and data that's available to us. That includes the forms that were sent out with questions from the public and also internally. So externally focused and internally focused. We want our teachers. We want our students. We want our community externally to have input as well. So we took all of that information, also all the artifacts. We aren't the first one to have this idea. Not in our state and not nationally in other states. Some have done it very well, some have not. So we've taken the information from those districts and we've really focused and concentrated on those challenges and then seeing how we might be able to do it better and what opportunities could come from that. So with that, some of the challenges that we saw, first and foremost, no surprise, childcare is a challenge for us as it has been in other communities as well. In looking at that, the access is what we're looking at as being the primary challenge that people might have. One thing that many people may not be aware of is that we reside in a childcare desert. And what that essentially means is there are not enough childcare providers within Broken Arrow, Tulsa Metro, in many areas within our state, in our nation, to provide the childcare services that are needed for families, just in sheer numbers. Secondarily, the cost of childcare has skyrocketed. I believe Ms. James mentioned that earlier. And so we saw from the sentiments of our community through our subcommittee that that's something that would be a challenge for us as well. And then secondly, with childcare still in mind, staffing. We know that we are just getting to a point within support services where we're able to stabilize our services across before and after care programs that we have within the district to where we're not in any issue of perhaps closing doors. Transportation, the same thing. You know, we're just getting out of the situation where we had severe staffing shortages. And so we're wanting to look at this through the lens of what can we do from a sustainability standpoint and where we are with that staffing? In order for us to staff, we looked at the survey, which was very, very important to us. Each and every survey question was reviewed. And one particular question that was very helpful for us was a number of families or students that would need childcare services and if it would be an affordability issue. The number that we got was two thousand two hundred and thirty-one students. At this time, we have nine hundred students enrolled in our before and after care program. In order for us to fulfill the need of a full day program on that fifth day, whether it be a Monday or a Friday, we would have to employ three hundred plus more employees. It takes us on a recruiting cycle to get twenty employees a little bit over a year. And so just knowing that that is a huge obstacle that we would have to face, that's something that we're looking at. It's not insurmountable, but it would be really, really challenging for us to do that. Another thing is providing meals to students. Going into this, looking at the other districts that have been in the same situation with investigating this opportunity, they were able to provide sack lunches, the, the mobile meals at, at sites or mobile meals within communities that were in desperate need or have food insecurities. And so that was something we broached the topic of and seeing if we may be able to do the same thing. And speaking with our state department, we are unable to provide those types of services, which are, are critical. In order for us to provide meals to our students who would need them on that fifth day, they would have to come into our cafeterias. They'd have to eat congregantly. They'd also have to apply for free and reduced lunches. If they were not eligible for free and reduced lunches, then they would have to pay for those meals. And so those are a lot of variables that are barriers to them receiving those meals. And it could be also costly. The economic impact for families was very difficult to ascertain. That was something that was asked a lot of times in the forms that we received. It's just hard for us to know with a fifty percent free and reduced lunch and not knowing the specifics of each individual household, and we have twenty thousand students, what would and would not work. So those surveys have been helpful for that. But it's still something that we're really trying to wrap our arms around and see what the impact may be. But it's something we have not fleshed out yet. And then financial implications. When we look at viability and feasibility of actually going to a hybrid program or a four-day calendar, one thing that we looked at from one rural community that's close, near Broken Arrow, that has been doing four-day work weeks or hybrid calendars for a while, is that they reduce their participation and now they've incurred a cost of twenty percent of their child nutrition cost. And for us, a twenty percent loss in revenue would totally present an issue with our child nutrition's financial solvency. And it would cost the district about two million dollars in order for us to make up for those meals. That's about, if you're good at math, about forty teacher positions. And so we know that financial implication is something that would be very difficult to overcome. With transportation, our district provides transportation because we know it's the right thing for our students. We know that we have a high need for students to get to and from school safely. Transportation is the safest form of trans, ground transportation there is. It helps us at sites where we have a lot of mobility and traffic and congestion and things of that nature. And so we make that investment. Our transportation costs us about ten million dollars a year. Our state department only reimburses us about eight percent or eight hundred thousand dollars. So that's a significant amount of our budget that we invest to ensure that students have a way to and from school safely. If we were to provide transportation on that fifth day, there would be no reimbursement from the state. It would be a hundred percent, the onus would be on the district to cover those. And so the financial implications from a support services side could be great. And then finally, our schedule disruptions. And looking at it from a family standpoint, one of the things we looked at is having the childcare services on that fifth day and not during a long-term period in, in the summer. And so with that disruption, knowing that we have a childcare desert, it would be challenging for families to receive that service once a week. It may not be affordable rather than a camp program with the church, rather than working or being within our summer program, which we, we do have a summer program for our before and after care. And so those are just one of very many scheduled disruptions. Our committee did a fantastic job of investigating that. They thought about joint custody. They thought about family time, which has been something, some of the sentiments that were echoed with, with family members having disruption to that summer vacation would also be a huge implication and a challenge to overcome. And on to some of the opportunities. We know that we have excellent care that we provide to the nine hundred students that have it available to them. And the enrichment programs that we provide in the summer are really, really good. We have B and A University where it gives students the opportunity to explore career and also college beyond BA at a very young age. We bring in police officers. We bring in fire department to kind of talk through those options and opportunities. And it's very well received. We'd love to expand that program. However, staffing is, is a challenge with doing that. We have been able to expand programming for two of our schools that were in need because our staffing has improved. One at Creekwood, we've added twenty additional slots. And then one at Liberty, we've added twenty additional slots. And so we know we can ramp up the services. We just don't know if we could do that for two thousand two hundred and thirty-one students. Extra income for teachers to staff. One thing that has helped us with recruiting and maintaining services for students is having the ability to employ some of our staff at sites. We have about four pairs that work for B and A and we have about sixteen teachers at those sites. Again, we would need three hundred in order for us to overcome that big staffing challenge. But it's still an opportunity for folks to earn a little bit of extra cash and not have to be away from their families and evenings and weekends and breaks and things of that nature. The increased remediation with transportation. We know that we experience summer slide. We, we know that there are times where students need a little bit of extra academic assistance. And so having that fifth day of targeted interventions could be very good for many families and for students. And it could really positively impact educational outcomes. In addition to that, partnerships with community organizations. I put this on the opportunities. However, there are some challenges with it as well. As we've moved from looking at viability and sustainability to feasibility of these programs and looking at the challenges from that lens, we've discussed this with the state. And, and one thing that we're, we're looking at too is in, in, you know, engaging third-party childcare providers in the area to see if they could help us. And from a food perspective, a lot of the food banks are, are really running dry with opportunities for us to partner with them. And then on the childcare side of it, there are just not enough daycares to provide services for the number of students that we, we have need of. We will continue to investigate that. We've only spoken to a couple. As a matter of fact, one of our committee members is an employee of one of our local food suppliers here. And so we're excited to continue to have those and look at that as an opportunity to overcome some of these challenges. And then increased staff morale and development from all avenues. You know, staff development's important, not only for the teacher in the classroom, but also for our transportation staff and making sure that they have all the skills that are needed to provide safe transportation to and from school. Our child nutrition staff, making sure that we improve the quality of the meals that we provide and make them more palatable. And then our before and after care program, including our Tiny Tigers Learning Center, making sure that we can provide the best care possible for not only our community and students, but also our own, our teachers and staff kids. And then family time and flexibility. We know that that's important in our community to have that where parents are able to stay home with their students. They have shared those sentiments through the survey. And then lastly, an opportunity could be to possibly pilot a program on a smaller scale before executing it out globally across the district. And then maybe, you know, some of the districts in the area are only implementing this calendar for grades nine through twelve. It's a sentiment that was shared through our committee. And it's also a sentiment that was shared through feedback from the community via the surveys and questions and emails and the chats and, and all of that. So very excited to continue this discussion and conversation and see where it goes. No decision has been made. We continue to investigate, again, the viability and feasibility of this. And I open it to any questions you may have.
Rosalind, I have one question or one comment to ask. And maybe Mr. Perry might be for you. You, you said staff development.
Yes.
You know, we all read comments. We all read these things that are people will say. Explain to us why you do staff development throughout the year. You just don't say, hey, we're going to do staff development for the two weeks of summertime. So, you know, that's kind of the thought is, well, why don't you just train when school's out and do all your staff development then? Can you explain why that happens the way it does?
I think the professional development, first off, we have to, we're required by the state to get in so many hours with that. And I always equate it to a coach that would not set his practice schedule from beginning the season to end and just stick with it, with that. If a basketball coach has a poor night of free throw shooting, what are they going to work on the next day? Free throws. And so these, the professional learning communities, the PLCs that we use in the district for that time period and the professional development, it's, it's tailored to what's happening right now in the classroom. If we see trends in a certain area that we're lacking, this gives us a time from that instructional standpoint, our teaching and learning team. They're looking at that data. They're, they're listening to teachers. And we're able to, as the year goes along, it's got to be fluid that we adjust and provide those things and give the teachers the tools they need and the staff development need if students are struggling in a specific area.
I appreciate that. I think it's good to know kind of method to maybe why we currently have distance learning days and do professional development on those days instead of just like that Friday off type, type of thing, so. I did have a question about the childcare. You had mentioned three hundred teachers. Say you all found a solution or resolution to the challenge. What's the economic impact to that, to the district to, to do that?
So if we were to cover the cost of childcare for those students, it would be about two point four million dollars, which is equivalent of about forty-eight teachers.
And those are some things, you know, with inflation right now. And I, I've heard from a lot of families that are struggling during this time period right now. And to put that, that burden on those families, that's a concern. Again, we do not take that lightly at all. And that would be an additional cost to those families that, you know, had to use childcare somewhere on those Fridays. Now, again, that childcare would have to be done in June, maybe on a traditional calendar. So it's still, I mean, you brought this up before. We're going the same number of days. So childcare in a three hundred and sixty-five day year may end up the same, but I think it would be a little bit more expensive to do it on a Friday on a weekly basis instead of boxed together in the summertime.
Mr. Perry, to add to that and to further clarify that, if it was a parents who had the cost, it would be thirty dollars. And that's kind of what we've reviewed per Friday and a total cost annually of about thirteen hundred dollars per family.
But you're looking at a hundred and twenty dollars a month added to, you know, a budget to a family that needed?
Correct.
Per, per student?
Correct. Per two thousand two hundred and thirty-one students.
Just to, just to clarify it, another comment. So two point four cost is, two point four million would be the cost to the district of kind of doing the coverage of daycare and things like that. But that's, in addition to that, if I wrote this down right, there was a twenty percent reduction in the, in the food services area that we would recognize as well too, so.
Yes. If we were to cover cost of feeding as well and looking at a similar, or a district doing that similar model of and looking at a similar or a district doing that similar model of calendar, they took a 20% reduction due to participation. Right now, with all the days that we have instruction in school session, instruction, if we lost that 20% of participation, it'd be about a $20 or $2 million cut.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify.
You're welcome.
Perfect. Just one other comment. You know, I know we talk about transportation. So from a district, I know transportation, if you can maybe touch on this, is transportation, are we required to provide transportation? Can you kind of talk to that from a perspective that we carry with that? That it's not required, but when is it required and how do we how do we handle it today?
That's a good question. So transportation is not required for general education students. It is something that we provide above and beyond what is required. For special needs students, if it is a related service in their individual education plan, then we do have to provide that. And 70% of the transportation that we provide is totally voluntary. Only 30% of the transportation we provide is federally mandated.
Thank you. That answers my question. Appreciate that.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
I have one. You guys have one? You mentioned 2.2 million for child nutrition loss, 10 million for reimbursement loss to transportation. Was that correct?
No, our cost for transportation is 10 million.
What would be the what would be the reimbursement cost that we would lose on transportation?
That's hard to ascertain without knowing what type of programming would be available on those Fridays. I was able to to look at the survey and get a number for the childcare without knowing what what services we would be rendering and how many miles. It's kind of hard to say. But if we did a 10%, you know, if we were providing the same type of services for the 2,200, right? You could foreseeably see about a million dollars in costs there with labor. Now, we're reusing some of that labor. This is in addition to. So we'd see some savings there, but a high estimate would be about that.
So you mentioned a neighboring district. I can't imagine any district losing millions of dollars and saying, hey, this is a good deal.
Sure.
So how are they how are they addressing those losses and overcoming those within their local districts?
So the district that I mentioned is is much smaller than Broken Arrow. As a matter of fact, I think their size is is lower than or close to that 2,200 students that we would need to provide childcare for. And so they saw a 20% reduction in their revenue. And so I was equating what our a 20% reduction in our revenue would be for child nutrition. And I think the impact is that financial solvency. They're they're having to take monies from their general fund that could have been paid through child nutrition,
Gotcha.
which takes away from added pay for teachers, you know, direct instruction in the classroom. All of those things that we want to secure within, you know, our budget, it's being removed to supplement this program in their district.
The 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 only reason we're having this conversation is for better education for our students. So these districts that you're looking at, are they having better numbers? Are they having better outcomes?
So we really focused our efforts on the area of support services, but we've been reviewing all of the studies. And a lot of it's been inconclusive. If you talk to the staff at those districts, they say there's been great gains in attendance. There's been great gains in remediation. But there's nothing that's been, you know, just solidified. The one thing that has been solidified with everyone that we've spoken to is that their retention and recruitment of teachers, they have no vacancies.
And I think that's that's been one of the things that's really stood out. We do not have a lot of longitudinal data because this has not been done for years and years. One thing out of our research that has really shown academic growth is a continuous learning calendar where maybe in session for eight weeks, off for two.
You really want to get in trouble, don't you?
That that is a big.
You'll bring those guys back if you keep talking about that.
Moving some cheese there. But that but that's something that there's there's enough data out there to really see that. But I do wish we had more on that academic achievement side. And there's some out there, the studies, you can kind of twist it any way you want. You could pick out the study that matches up with, and we're trying to look at it from a holistic view.
I appreciate that, Mr. Perry, because I know that I, you know, with getting comments from the public, you want to try to do from a board perspective, the most conclusive research you can. I mean, and you can find one for and one for again. One says it doesn't have an impact. The state of Missouri does. And one says, well, it does have a 2% negative impact. And one says retention and mental health is up. And one says it, you're going to pay your teachers less. It's going to, you know, all those things. So I guess you can find a study to fit whichever position you want. I think our focus needs to be focused on best for kids instead of a study. So.
Is is any of this financially feasible?
From a childcare and child nutrition standpoint, we have not find found an opportunity that would be financially solvent where it's not costing us an astronomical amount of money to cover those services.
And what I was told last time was that the districts that have done this, childcare's always been the challenge for about a year. Have you, did you notice that also?
Yes. One district in particular, that's in Missouri, they provided childcare and they had a public donor to provide that, which in that case, if we had a donor to pay those monies for us to provide that care.
Anyone listening out there?
Yeah. If you have anyone out there, they were able to overcome that. And they said that after they opened for a year, it wasn't an issue. Several of the districts that we talked to said that was a number one concern. And right after six months or halfway through that first year, it wasn't an issue anymore.
So Ms. Jackson, what's the committee's plan to continue to look for maybe potential solutions? Or are they going to look for potential solutions for the daycare challenge?
Yes. So we have just embarked on looking at the feasibility. We've only talked to one or two local childcare institutions. And we've only visited with one food bank. And so we're going to exhaust our efforts to see if there are opportunities out there that we haven't uncovered yet. And if we have a donor who would like to assist us with that, that's always going to be welcomed. We're really going to focus hard on feasibility. We're going to look at the survey results and make our recommendations based on on that and all the other feedback that we receive.
With that survey, can you make sure that, or not make sure, but is there a way to where the parents that are impacted are the ones that are doing the survey? And then to get that intended result you want? And then I know at one point you did it on one of the surveys in the past where they had to put their student ID in to do the survey. That way they're they're would actually are going to be impacted one way or the other instead of just having a thought or feeling about it and I'm taking the survey anyways? And is there a way to do that on those surveys?
That I'm not certain of.
Okay. And that maybe was directed at Mr. Bowser, but.
It's a great question.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No worries. It's okay. There are a couple of different ways to answer that question. So one, one of the challenges that we have is that we're trying to involve people who are not just parents, who we might have student ID or even email addresses for because we do acknowledge that it's a community impact. And so that's one of the reasons that we opted to do use this Thought Exchange platform and not just tie it to student IDs. So that's one side of it. Then on the other side, in this most recent survey, you saw there was one question where people could say, I'm not a resident, I'm not an employee, and I'm also not a parent. Well, we also fully acknowledge that people will take screenshots or share information. And so we can't control, once, you know, it goes to you or Ms. Roulette or whomever else, what you do with it from there. So if you take it and share it with, let's say you have a family chat and your family lives in Oregon or Florida, and you can have all of them take it. And so it still gives us an opportunity to try and keep that data pure because we can run, once the survey has closed, we can run different filters on it. So if we only want to see secondary parents, then we can see the answers of those people who've identified as secondary parents. Now, I can't verify that everyone's telling the truth on that. But I can say that we can try to filter that in such a way that they are self-representing themselves so that we can try and get the most accurate picture that we can when we can exactly control where that information might be getting. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think it would be beneficial some way to where if it was a parent, because it reminds me of coming out of COVID when you all were looking at the options of COVID. I think that's when you did the the ID number. Because, you know, we may say it's 2,000, but what if the number's really 200? You know, if I'm advocating for it one way or the other and I get all my support friends or whomever to go, hey, I need you to do this because we don't need this thing like it's to go through. And I think it's would be beneficial to get the pure number of parents and what that would look like to. I mean, that economic impact may be less or, you know, it may it may be. I just think it's a better, we need better, a clear, stronger data point from that.
Absolutely. And that's something that Mr. Bowser and I can work on together if we, for future surveys. The platform that we have right now, I don't believe it's possible to, you know, restrict it to. Right now, it's just restricted to an IP address, for example. So whether you take it on your phone or your desktop or your laptop, it, you know, it's restricted to that. But we can certainly work with Mr. Bowser and do and the technology team and come up with something similar to what you're talking about. Because I believe that you are right. They did filter out duplicates or, not that anyone would take the survey twice, but if they did, we would be able to filter that out if we were tracking it. Now, that will, Mr. Allen, we wouldn't be able to send it to communities. So we might have to do just a survey specifically targeted to those parents to hear their voice because that way we could control the purity of the data.
I think that from the pure impact of daycare, it's obviously going to be the parents. Like, and however we group those, like, that would be something great for the parents. But yet also, you got to have the community be able to respond if they are in that industry of what that looks like of of a positive or negative impact as well. So maybe one more community-driven aspect and one more parent-driven survey. So you get the parent holistic data and then the community's data and look through those as well. So.
And we can certainly, so the survey's closing on the 22nd. And I have a conference call set up with our consultant, Thought Exchange. And so that's a question I can ask them too because I'm still learning the software. And so there may be some capabilities that it has that I'm not aware of as far as, you know, if, let's say, Mr. Cockrell answers a question as a parent and then it diverts them to a different line of questioning. So there are some things that we can explore to to get that data a little bit more pure.
I would like to add that one thing that has also been helpful is having the subcommittees and the fact that they're comprised of over 120 parents, students. You know, we get that input from them as well. I know it's not the broad spectrum of 20,000, but it also gives us a barometer to kind of gauge if we're really getting good information as well.
Well, I appreciate you and the committee's work because it does look like, I mean, there's some significant challenges that need to be considered and need to be discussed and need to be looked in further. I mean, that's alarming, the numbers you gave from the financial impact. I look at Natalie over there from the finance side. She's probably about to throw a shoe at us if you even consider anything like that. So.
I was going to tell you to duck, but I wasn't sure.
No, and yeah, but I appreciate the work because I mean, that's that's good information.
You're welcome.
Ms. Van Jackson, one other thing.
Yes.
You mentioned that several school districts that had implemented the four-day school week found that after six months, the daycare wasn't a big issue. Did you find out why? What changed?
No, that's why that economic impact is so challenging. We can survey people, we can ask them. But I think what happens is, like you said earlier, change is emotional. And so you think of the worst-case scenario. I think about a school bus route. Sometimes we'll ask if you want the bus and we'll probably get 18,000 that say they want it, but only 14,000 really take it. And it's hard. There's really not a one, you know, size fits all approach. And so it's driven community to community what that looks like. I think in the the community that we spoke of, the one that were able to provide the services and to back it up with monies for it, I think that community had more viability by way of not being a childcare desert as we are.
And I think, you know, parents sometimes are able to, it gets becomes a routine to in a lot of ways. I mean, we're getting ready to, students will not be in school for two weeks. And I know there's parents that are going to be working all through winter break and they've got to find childcare options then and holidays throughout the year. It's, yeah, it's it's a challenge and it's not just the four-day week. It's just more frequent on the four-day week.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunn and our student engagement.
Yes, sir. Thank you, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. I don't know where we're going to land with this, but I am full of optimism that it's going to be great for our community, our teachers, our kids. You can't spend this much time, as you can see with Mrs. Van Jackson, so much time and energy and effort has been spent by a lot of great people in our community just looking at this and researching it. You know, I want to give a shout out to my subcommittee. It's it's, we're looking at our student engagement, student activities, and we kind of feel like we're the hook for a lot of our students. We want every student at Broken Arrow Public Schools to to feel engaged in and outside of the classroom. And we feel like that's the hook that excites them to come to school and to to act right, do right, perform well in the classroom, to be goal-oriented and all those things. And and so our subcommittee kind of looks at this through that lens. Again, teachers and directors and coaches. We have several parents on the committee. And most importantly, we have students on our committee. And we have given our students a voice and their feedback has been incredible. Just hearing their perspective, they're the ones that are experiencing this. And it's 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 because of them that we're having the conversation in the first place. You know, to start with some of the challenges that we've uncovered, and again, I think that we're so solutions-oriented that we can look at every challenge and we can give you a great answer about how we would attack it. But there are some real challenges that that pose some difficulties in our co-curricular activities and a lot of our clubs and organizations, fine arts, athletics. We did speak, our committee has called fine arts directors and athletic directors and principals and superintendents from Missouri, Texas, Colorado, Oklahoma, who have implemented a either a four-day week or some form of a hybrid calendar. And so a lot of this is data-driven. A lot of it's anecdotal. It's just the experience of people who are living this kind of a calendar and who have gone through it from its infancy to to where it is today. And so it's it's real information that we're getting from real people. There have been some reported instances of a decrease in student attendance to these activities or rehearsals or practices, meetings or events that take place on that what I'll call an open day or off day during the week. And it's pretty simple. When kids are at school, they're going to show up after school. When they're not in school, there's a there's more of a prevalence of of a lack of attendance. And for most of the time, some feedback we got from some friends down in Texas was, it happens to be our most vulnerable students who might have some transportation insecurities or food insecurities, or maybe they have, you know, one parent home or they have siblings at home that can't stay by themselves on that off day. And so the ability to capture some of those vulnerable students and and those are the ones that we like to have as many touch points during the week as we possibly can just to check in on them. And a lot of times it's our directors or coaches that are kind of the the motivators for a lot of those students. And so, you know, that's the feedback we get from our committee members of of directors and coaches is they want their kids up there. And so that was something that came up several times with with employees that work in districts that have something like this. I have fewer opportunities to get off the eligibility. Here's the thing with 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 co-curricular activities. We are on our students' tails every day, every week, all throughout the year, checking classes, checking grades, annual or weekly drug testing. And so there is a coach or a director every single week that is, that knows you by name. They know your teachers. They're talking with your teachers, with your parents, and they're on top of these things. And so just by the nature of maybe not being at school for five days a week, but being there at five, it's or being there four, it's just one fewer day that you have an opportunity, you know, to make up that assignment that might have been missed or to get off of that eligibility list that you might have found yourself on. And so that's that's something that our coaches and directors do every single week is contact teachers and and parents to help our students academically. I hit on the contact during the week with our most vulnerable students. Another thing is we've looked at so many of our challenges or opportunities, it's dependent on the type of calendar that we adopt. And whether it be a Friday, whether it be a Monday, whether that school day extend and get a little bit longer into the afternoon or we're starting a little bit earlier, it poses more challenges. And so that's kind of the future work of our committee is to, as we kind of narrow down some of these calendar options, we'll be able to really identify some specific challenges related to that specific calendar. But under the scenario where we are going to school a little bit longer during the school day because of the fewer total days that we're attending in the school calendar, that is going to lead to some longer evenings. um, that is going to lead to some longer evenings. Um, I think that, you know, if you're, if you're starting a, a practice or rehearsal at 1:45 right now and, um, that's pushed back to 2:45, then that's another hour into the evening that you're pushing your, your homework, your family time, your dinnertime, maybe a job that you have after your activity. Um, and so that, that was just one of those, again, those real-world experiences that a lot of our kids, um, have to overcome. Um, and then we, we've already hit on the, the childcare, it's, it's no different for, for the teachers, directors, coaches in our area that, that have children and, and have really busy schedules into the evening. Um, another challenge that, that has kind of, um, surfaced over and over, the activity-related absences. Uh, when you have that day that goes a little bit longer into the afternoon, we don't have control over when activities are scheduled, um, either by the NFHS or the, um, OMEA or the OSSAA. That, that's, those are the governing bodies that, that really set your, determine your schedules, your conference schedules, your district schedules. I can tell you, in a lot of our activities, those events are starting at three o'clock, um, maybe four o'clock, and going to these districts in Oklahoma City, we're having to leave at noon a lot during the school year. And in a, in a calendar where you're going from five days a week to four days a week, um, there's more content covered in that class period. And so if you miss one class period during a four-day week, you're missing a lot more content than you would if you were missing one class in a five-day week. And so, um, and you have one fewer day, uh, to make that assignment up and, you know, you have the same number of activities, um, getting back later, you know, your practices are ending later. So, you know, just trying to think through all those challenges that exist, whenever you might be going to school a little bit longer during the day, practices are extended a little bit longer into the evening, and then having the same number of activity absences in the same locations across the state, um, one missed day in the classroom in a four-day week, it, it's really about two missed days because of the content and the load that teachers are having to get into that extended class period. Um, opportunities, um, we looked at, and again, I think a lot of the opportunities are dependent on the type of calendar that we would land on. Um, this came from our students. Um, we have one of our students who, who is an AP student, uh, who participates in soccer, uh, just, uh, on our superintendent's advisory council, just, just the who's who of a, a student that you would wanna have. Um, and, and she spoke about just the improvement in mental health with that additional day of rest, just being able to sleep in and just catching up on sleep. And she's one of the most busy students we have. It's exactly what we want for our kids. We want them to go to bed really tired at night because they're so hooked up and engaged and, and doing the right thing. And, and she's an incredible student, very smart, very driven, study, great study habits. Um, and even hearing her talk about just the time to breathe and to relax and to plan out, um, what her week might look like or what her weekend might look like and, and to be able to structure a morning on what she, you know, wants to do or needs to do in class versus what she has to do because it's in her schedule. So that was something that came up, I thought stood out to me as an opportunity coming from one of our students. Um, an open day during the week for appointments. What we see a lot in our area is if, if, if I'm a parent and I'm going to schedule appointment for my own child, I'm looking at our co-curricular class period, I'm not looking at my math class or my English class or something that's gonna set my child back academically. And so, um, you know, it's inevitable that a lot of the students are gonna miss a rehearsal or miss a practice, uh, for that appointment, and all kids have them, no one's immune from those things. And so having a day during the week that is dedicated as an open day, just, it gives parents, I think, an opportunity to schedule those appointments, um, accordingly. Um, I know Mrs. Van Jackson mis- mentioned those enrichment remediation, remediation opportunities during that open day, um, and that has, uh, other impacts. While it might be an opportunity for, for student engagement, student activities, it's a tremendous challenge for, for transportation, you know, as we talk about those vulnerable students and, and those who, who might not have transportation to get to the school for those enrichment remediation opportunities on that open day. Um, for us, it would be an opportunity as a day for, for students to get that study hall or that extra tutoring or one-on-one help with a, with a teacher, with a coach, uh, with a director. Uh, so that is a potential opportunity. Um, we had a teacher, uh, I believe a drama teacher at one of our sites who, who talked about just additional, you know, and I put optional, um, prep time. I was raised by a couple educators and, and, um, teachers don't, they don't go home and, and not think about work. You know, they, if, if they're fortunate enough to get a planning period, a lot of them don't get a planning period because they're selling their plan to cover classes because we don't have teachers. But if they do have a planning period, they're answering emails, they're calling parents, they're grading papers, um, and you can't get it all finished in 50 minutes before the bell rings and you have to go out to the hallway and supervise students. And so teachers take that work home, uh, coaches take that work home, directors take that work home. So not only are they practicing a little bit later in the evenings, um, they're gonna have the same amount of workload when they get home to, to plan and prep and, and grade and especially our, our English teachers who are grading those essays. It's, it's a challenge, um, and so just a, an open day during the school week, uh, it gives some additional optional prep time, uh, for teachers to, to not have instruction, to not have class. Um, obviously, we don't want them working on their off day, but they do it anyways. And it would just give them a little bit more flexibility to do it. Um, and again, recruit and retain the best staff in Oklahoma. It's the only reason we're having this conversation, um, and, and we have talked in cabinet, um, we have the best staff in Oklahoma, we wanna keep them. And we have those, those folks who retire, or they move out of state or their spouse has a job relocation, we wanna replace them with a teacher who's as good or better than they were. And so that's the only reason we're having this conversation, um, is this an opportunity for that? It could be. Um, it's worth having that conversation. Again, wherever it lands is gonna be great. You can't spend the time we're spending on it with the people that are at the table and not have great solutions. I'm excited to see where we land with it because I know it's gonna be good. Um, and we did get some reports of, you know, lower absenteeism during the school week, knowing that there was an off day at the, or at the beginning or at the end of the week, which, you know, if you're going to school, you know, fewer days, you know, the, the, and, and you're getting some of those mental health breaks, you know, some of the, uh, instances of bullying have, have shown to decrease in, in the, uh, school districts. And so while, Mr. Allen, you, you asked about some of the academic data from the school districts who have done this. One thing that does stand out in pretty much every study that our, uh, committee has looked at is a decrease in the instances of bullying.
I saw that.
Yes, sir. Um, do you have any questions, uh, from a student activity, student engagement, uh, perspective?
What is, what is the, you, you, you hit on the activities, not leaving for activities, going up and see where you may go. What's the day that's missed the most i- in the school days for activities?
Right now, um, I think Fridays. You, you, you tend to have the most, um, activities on a Friday. And again, those are scheduled, those are, those are not scheduled by us.
So, so students or in fine arts or athletics, Friday's probably the number one day that they're missing the most class on. Uh, would you say that or is that not accurate?
We haven't looked at, I don't wanna, I, I, I'm hesitant because I don't have the number, and I don't wanna give you bad information because it, a lot of it depends on the activity. You know, if you look at, um, you know, for example, basketball, they're playing on Tuesdays and Fridays. And, and so you, there's a, there's a great chance that with the districts now and having a couple west-side schools in each district, that you're traveling on a Tuesday night and not getting back until 11, 12 o'clock.
I think it'd be helpful if you were able to get some specifics of
You bet.
what that impact looks like, you know, we're gonna miss, fine arts would miss this many days of instruction, you know, if we went to this calendar, and then athletics would miss this many days of instruction, you know, or, or this much class. I think it'd be helpful to have that information.
It's good feedback.
To, to do that.
We have, uh, two meetings scheduled for January and, and hopefully, you know, we're able to look at, like I said at the beginning, some of those more specific calendars and how, um, there might be specific challenges, and I'll, I'll make sure we make note of the activity-related absences based on the calendar.
And that's also gonna include, uh, absences from coaches slash teachers?
That's right. Yes, sir. You know, one interesting thing as well, Mr. Allen, um, in talking with the OSSAA, um, you are not permitted to have a practice, an official practice during the offseason. You know, you have start and end dates to seasons now, that's new since you coached, but, um, if it is a non-school day, so if it is, it is not a day of instruction that is counted towards instruction, then you are not permitted in the offseason to have any sport-specific instruction. So you could not have a practice. And looking at our fall sports, that would be about 26 practices during the year that they wouldn't be permitted to have. And, and, you know, once again, it's, it's, those are offseason practices, but there's a lot of instruction that takes place and, and that's where you develop and that's where those young guys are, are, and, and young ladies are, are developing and increasing skills and, and, and so that's something, you know, again, is it insurmountable? It's not, you know, we would, we would focus on strength conditioning and have open gyms, open mats and, you know, different things, but.
I find that interesting.
Sure.
We have state legislators that love to talk just about local control, but yet we're told we can't have practice if you happen to have, not have school that day, which makes zero sense to me. If they wanna go and Ben wants to march on the Monday or Friday you're off and practice, why shouldn't they be allowed to? If the kids want to and the instructor wants to and...
Well, it just has to be volunteered.
Voluntold. But, but this, but the, but the, it would not be, I'm gonna assume there'd be some sanctioning that could possibly take place if you went and had a practice. I mean, why, I just don't understand that.
Sure.
That's, but blows my mind.
All right. Mr. Stecker.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn.
Well, good evening, everyone. Uh, do I also wanna thank the HR committee, our subcommittee that served, um, did find it an interesting group. We have a great group of parents, administrators, teachers, everyone on it. Um, one thing we have found with our area is that most everything that's a challenge is also an opportunity or vice versa. We would debate it for long periods of time, and a lot of ours really hinges on once the calendar finally comes out. Uh, calendars can look a lot of different ways. They can be that we extend the school day, make it longer. That's a version to get in our 1,080 hours. It could also be that we look to go the same amount of days, but just spreading them out differently. And with those, that really hinges a lot of the HR that we'll be looking at as we work through this. So with that, we did look at three areas. We really looked at our staff and recruitment and retention. You've heard a lot about that through all the groups, um, also payroll and really compensation. And then we looked at our substitutes and absenteeism as well as we went through it. Obviously, one of the challenges on the, uh, staff and recruitment is the increased workload per day, and that would be based on a calendar if it was a longer day. We could see that that would cause our teachers, our support employees that's working a longer day to be tired at the end, where they're trying to give instruction and work with our students. As you can see, that would be an issue with that type of a calendar. Uh, obviously, that would not be, and as I say, it could be a, an opportunity or just be neutral if it was just that we had more days added into the calendar, just looking differently. Um, we do no change, as we've heard, is really difficult. We look at some of our veteran teachers, uh, this could be a new challenge for them as a change in a schedule that they might not like. We would probably find some veteran teachers that would love it as well. So as we go through these, you can see we have a lot of that. Uh, overwhelming the new teachers, one of the really key elements of this would be that you do have the work-life balance, which we'll talk about as one of our opportunities. But when you, when you discuss that and you had a whatever day a week, whether it was a Monday or Friday off with a three-day weekend, those individuals would really wanna spend the time with their family, having that life balance. So really, you'd be planning a lot for our new teachers, trying to like get all their lesson plans in, grading in a shorter amount of time if they really did truly take advantage of the work-life balance. Uh, that also falls with the prep time there as well. And then a lot of discussion, this could only be a temporary, uh, solution for our recruitment, that if other districts went to it, continued on, it would be neutral after a period of time as well. It went a little deeper though with some of that discussion, that if we did this and others started, maybe it would be something that colleges and universities would start seeing uptick in people going into the education sector because of having a different type of schedule. So as you can see, everything can really go back and forth. As far as payroll and compensation, there would be quite a few challenges on our contracts and the way those would look. Uh, we've talked about staying budget-neutral, that everyone would not have a loss in pay. Uh, when you think about our support employees, don't, we don't think about this, but they're really divided into two groups. There's a group that actually follows a bell schedule, which means if we increase the day, they would make up their time during that period, so they would actually work all the time. But we have others, for example, like child nutrition or transportation that drive a route or prep food, their time would stay the same because their schedule's really not tied to a bell schedule. So if we do stay where everyone does not have a decrease in pay, we would have one support group that would, we'd have to increase their pay, which would be our transportation and our drivers if we do longer days and have less. Once again, it's all based on the calendar, which we see that could actually be a little bit of an issue with the culture of one subgroup getting a sub, a raise and the other group not. So we do have to take that into consideration. The other thing's a lot, that there's a lot of moving parts in the area. We have a lot of different contract times in our pay area where we start people, some are on August pay through July, some are August through, you know, uh, September, so it all starts working around a lot with our different pay schedules. So we'd have to really look at all of those as well and spend a lot of time in trying to get those organized. Another thing is really benefits that fall into that in time off, which is part of our workday calendar. Uh, we have so many of our teachers that work extra days, whether it's 20 days or 40 days. And when you think about the schedule, it could cause less time during the summer if you're working a 40-day additional contract. What does that look for our employees? Is that good culture? Maybe it is. Maybe they like having a Friday or Monday off, but pretty much work all summer with their additional days. So our workday counter would come into play. Our benefits would be very concerning that we'd have to look at, and that's really for employees that leave us or come in. Most of all of our state plans start on a September and run through August as far as benefits. But if we bring any new employees in, they're benefit-eligible in the month that they start employment. So it could cause, though we start some of these, if they would start in July, we'd have benefits then that would kick into August, where now they're running a different schedule. If they would leave us and go to another district, they could have 30 days without insurance or be out of pockets. We'd have to work with the state. So those are some of the benefit areas that would be some work that we'd have to do on our part. I said all the team, we, time we would find solutions, but there would be some things that we have to do. And just the additional work hours, we've heard a lot of things about if it is a Friday or Monday that we'd have employees working, well, when you're working, we have to pay them, so how do we co- how do we compensate them? How are we captioning that time? We aren't annualized pay right now, so we would start having them work, or we're gonna just base that into their contract, which wouldn't be the increase in pay, I think Rosalyn mentioned, which would be really good, but others is at a timesheet, so we'd have to really take into consideration those additional work hours. And then some of the challenges on substitutes and absenteeism, we would hope that the absenteeism would be better for our teachers and our employees, that we would see a, a, uh, decrease in absences, which would be wonderful. Uh, we do, I think with the HR group, we always think, well, well, for example, the day off was Friday, would Thursday become the new Friday? We really don't know until we actually get into this situation and see that, what would that would be like. The other areas is substitutes. If the day was longer, are we gonna compensate our substitutes more money? Uh, we could also look at, if there's only four days for them to earn income here, would they go and work at another local district where they could work five days a week? So it could cause our substitute pool to come down as well as far as retention for subs. So that's some of our challenges we looked at. Then on our opportunities, uh, obviously, the number one is really the work-life balance, I think, which is, uh, when I start thinking about this, would be a wonderful thing. I think that'd be part of that retention boost, I think it'd be a recruitment, I think we could see a lot of people come into it due to that. Uh, obviously, early on, we'd have a competitive edge in recruitment, so we could see more people, those slots that Mr. Allen brought up today, the 10 open positions that we could fill. It also might be an idea that would cause, as we talked earlier, about a career path for more people to go into education, just looking at doing it differently, and then also possibly reduce burnout by working a four-day week and having an extra time off. And then mental health benefits, we can't say enough about that. There would be a lot of benefits there for that part. And the last thing, uh, payroll, it could simplify some contracts, we would work, uh, flexibility for staff, um, once again, no reduction in pay. And then once again, we already talked about the absenteeism, possibly fewer days off to cover subs as well, letting the teacher have a day off during the week for personal business. Any questions?
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I was just kind of curious, you know, I know we've talked about retention and attracting and recruiting. Can you, and this may be something we look at later, but I am curious that, you know, what has our voluntary departure number been or rate been, let's say, for a little while, for the past few years?
Yeah.
Do we have that?
We can get that for you. We have shown, and I think really it's been through what we feel our stipends is we have, we've actually had a decrease in employees leaving each year. So we were up over, at one time, we were up over 200 teachers and we were back down to about 135 this year. So I think the stipend and culture's also already helped with that and possibly potentially us considering a four-day as well.
Mr. Stecker, too, that though. You're still not seeing professionals come out of college or sort, you're seeing people come over, but we have to get them emergency certified. So that number's going down, but it may necessarily not be the best, and I'm not saying the, the most qualified or trained educator that you may have got, for whatever reason, recruit them away from somewhere else. Is that, that number's going up in emergency certification still?
That, that is correct. There are fewer going into the universities for education. We see that across the board in the state of Oklahoma.
You made a comment about the challenges with your support staff and your hourly staff, you know, just trying to address some of the comments that I've read and emails and just questions from public. Will anyone receive a reduced compensation or reduced pay if it was a go-to a four-day week?
No, sir. Everyone will keep the same pay.
No one would lose money or get paid less?
No.
Okay.
Actually, it could be opportunities to make more, as you've heard quite a bit tonight.
So you talked about the contract renegotiations and getting all the contracts and just sitting here and you've got 1,300 students, 25 for 2,000, 2,500 staff. That seems daunting to bill between December and the starting, can you get it done?
We would get it done, yes. As you can see, I'm already getting gray hair and losing hair thinking about it. There are, and I will say with our committee, once you get it, there are so many moving parts in a district our size to make this work. That is very concerning to me, whether we could actually pull it off or not.
Should it be a huge challenge?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Allen, I'm glad to hear you kind of bringing that kind of viability point up because, again, I think as you all are navigating through the analysis and, and looking at this, I think execution is really a key component that we really need to consider in the timeframes or when we plan to bring this to fruition or what do we bring to fruition. Because, you know, when it comes down to implementing this, I mean, again, we want it to be the, for the best and come out to be the best and that experience, we don't want it to be a big goose egg of something. So I think that is something, and, and I'm glad you brought that up, Mr. Allen. I think that is something that all the committees have to really kind of look at as well. And, and when it comes to those recommendations, take that into consideration because I totally agree with you.
Well, I, and I'm just going to say it, I, I think there's a lot of work to do. You know, you talk about the $2 million of loss in child nutrition, the, the non-reimbursement on transportation and the number one glowing 2,000-plus students possibly that may need daycare. I mean, and we don't have answers to that today. I know, I couldn't rightfully say right now, I'm in favor to go to a four-day week and not have answers to the challenges. So I, until we have solutions for the challenges, I don't, I don't, I think we got to continue to work, look for answers to the challenges instead of force this down the community's throat, just say, we're doing it by God, let's go. I don't know if it's called pump the brakes or it's, let's continue to do our work, whatever that looks like, but we need to answer those challenges before we make that decision. And I wouldn't be comfortable making a decision in February. So with what you've provided today, unless we had real solutions to the challenges.
Well, we don't know yet if there really is an academic increase to the students either.
Right.
Can I give you a timeline, kind of where we're at and kind of close, wrap this up here? Our survey is open until December 22nd. We encourage the public out there, if you have not taken the survey, or employees, to please take it. We want your feedback. It helps us make a decision. Again, I don't have all the answers. I don't think we have all the answers, but if we collectively work together, our, our school district and our parents and, and team up, I think we can get to a, a, a great solution. And that is where that survey comes into play. There's going to be at least a couple more surveys that come out, too, to get finer refinement on, on the feedback we've received so far. We have more committee work when we get back from break. As you've seen, the calendars that have been released out there, we've got to take it, continue to take a look at those, tweak those. And as you just mentioned, look for solutions to those challenges that are out there that we don't have answers for. And the final meeting on January 29th with the committee and then bringing the final recommendation to the board February 10th. I can tell you, this teacher shortage is real. It's tangible. We feel it. I had a teacher just this last week, is at the high school, speaking to the faculty. She's been, she's a sped teacher and that's where we started the year with 11 positions unfielded. And she'd been, I mean, really called to that profession of being a special education teacher. But she looked at me and said, I don't know if I can keep doing this, because she's one where we've had to pay her an additional one-sixth of her salary to cover another class and teach another class every day, but that, that's more I E Ps, that's more parents, that's more, you know, therapy that she's got to arrange. And she said, I'm just exhausted. I've, I've never had a year like this before. So people are trying to fill the gap, but it's a drain. Want to remind everybody again, we need help from our legislature. This teacher shortage, we can't solve just in Broken Arrow. I, I did go to a roundtable discussion with superintendents a couple weeks ago with Senator Adam Pugh, who's the head of the Education Committee at the Capitol. I can't say enough good things about his passion for public education, looking for solutions. He would like for starting pay in Oklahoma for teachers to be 50,000. He's very realistic, though. He doesn't know if he'll have the support to do that. But he is trying to find ways to make this a, a state that attracts teachers. And this teacher shortage is not just in Oklahoma. He, he, he let us know, this is across the nation right now. And, and again, it goes beyond just a calendar. It's, it's the stipends. We can't ignore the impact of salaries and the stipends we're doing. We've got to provide a great culture in the classroom. We've got to provide the support with principals and, and we're working on those things every day. This, we haven't stopped all that stuff, but this is something we're, again, we're looking at and hope to come up with a win for the district along the lines the next couple months.
I would, just one kind of final comment for myself. I mean, to the committee, to the committees that have all been involved, an incredible job. I mean, being able to compile this amount of information, look at everything and with it continuing, hats off to you guys for, for really doing an amazing job. I know there's a lot more work to be done, so thank you in advance of that. But again, it's, this is how we get better and I, I am grateful for the participants that are playing a role in these committees. And so it couldn't be done. We can't have the best district without your all's help, so thank you.
Mr. Dunn, I'd like to add that, too, because I would like to thank the committee. Got a lot of work to do. And I'm thinking about this calendar and kind of equating it to our re-entry plan for COVID. And, and then the reason I say that is because I'm thinking, well, God, they've had a lot, they haven't had a lot of time, they've got about three months. But you, you guys have a school district run on a daily basis. And then start to come up with solutions for this plan and then solve all the issues you're dealt with day in, day out, then try to put us, put this together with all those meetings. So during COVID, we didn't have school that entire last semester, so you got, you could focus on that one thing and deal with those things. So that's a lot of work and I, and I commend you all in the committee and still keeping our district open every day and providing services to our kids. And I just hope the committee will continue the hard work, continue to try to find a calendar that works best to help us retain and attract the best employees we can and ultimately provide the best education for our kids. So that's what I hope the committee will do. Because it just seems like there is still a lot of work to be done.
I'll just add to that. I hope people listening have realized that we have not made a decision. The emails I get saying that we're pushing our agenda, that we're not listening to parents, that we're not listening to the community, that I'm disgraceful. You know, like there, people just get so emotional about this issue and it has not been decided at all. And if you can see from the board meeting tonight, it's actually kind of gone in the other direction. So if you can just keep the rhetoric and just bring that temperature down just a little bit, that would be really appreciated because we are just people up here trying to do the best for the kids.
We're your neighbors. You know, we're all in this together. Any other comments? All right. Thank you all very much. Next item are comments from the public. Again, three minutes to a non-agenda item, five minutes to an agenda item. Mr. Denton will keep time and he will tell you when there's 30 seconds remaining. We'll ask you to wrap that up and then, once time ends, we'll ask you to please end your comment to, to the board. So first up will be Mr. McIntosh. This, this will be a non-agenda item. First speaker. Uh, three minutes.
Okay.
Just wanted to briefly talk about the schedule. Only thing I come to.
Hold on a second, hold on. That, that is not what you put down on.
I, I just want to say a real quick comment. I know I'm going to cover the other three things. Real quick, they're going to be brief.
Well, no, because your, your comments, unfortunately, we have to stick to the policy, so we need to go by the sheet, please.
I want to address hygiene for my daughter. She's only allowed to go to the bathroom five times in a semester. That's the policy from the school. She's not allowed to bring a bag to the bathroom for feminine hygiene. She's not allowed to address that in any shape, form, or fashion. Not to mention, she can't go in there because we were talking about here, a good state of mind. My daughter starts her menstruation cycle, has a problem, has to sit there throughout the class, come home covered in it. It's not okay. And you talk to the school and they go, well, that's policy. They're smoking or vaping into the bathroom. That was an issue for me. And then transportation, my daughter's been left on the bus, taken back to the yard where another bus driver caught her in there. She didn't get home till around 19:30. Contact them, they say, oh, our policy would never allow that. And I go, well, the police report says different. It did happen. She's been in three bus accidents just this year. School only notified me of one. She was checked out by an ambulance two other times. That's an issue for me. No medical evaluation, but yet Broken Arrow Fire Department did evaluate her and I had to fore you those medical records just to make sure she was good, give them to her doctor. The phone policy, Mr. Blackburn, I think is his name, he's the only person actually ever returned a phone call throughout the process. One thing I have a problem with this is it's been policy and now we're trying to act like it's a new policy and we're enforcing it. We failed to enforce it. Why don't we just be transparent and go, hey, we messed up, now we're going to do it? We're not doing that. On that topic, I believe teachers should have their phones put away during the classroom as well. I sent Mr. Blackburn a video of a teacher filming a TikTok with political views during class and I go, and hey, you want my daughter not to have her phone because I'm preaching, put your phone away? Teachers need to do the same. Same with the watch. And the other issue I have is contacting the district for anything. I literally spent 48 days trying to get in touch with someone on this panel. 48 days. Emails, phone calls, going up to everyone. Transportation, you go to the school, principal goes, hey, that's transportation. I can't help you. Once they leave my yard, it's on them. Transportation, you go to them, though, we'll call you back. I said, I think it was Blackburn, he's the only gentleman on all these issues that ever reached out, contacted me back. Other than that, I have no other issue with, with the policy. I just hope you guys pick the right solution. That's it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Charles Williams.
Good evening. Members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening concerning the possibility of the hybrid calendar for BA public schools. I'm a father with two elementary school children in Rosewood. I also serve on the H R Exploration Committee chaired by Mr. Stecker, who I must say does a wonderful job and is a joy to work with. He seems to be a great asset for the district. I personally want to speak out against the policy of the four-day calendar. I'm not convinced it's what's best for student outcomes. I feel like it'll be very difficult to implement, as we've heard. I feel like it won't be worth the effort it requires to implement. And most of all, I fear it will greatly harm the BA families that already face too many challenges in our society. However, this is simply my opinion, and while I know that the board greatly values input from the community, my, my opinion is inherently subjective. I would like to speak to the board about more objective reality of the hybrid plan. Excuse me. If the hybrid plan is passed, there will be a huge amount of change that is required on the time and the efforts of all BA public school staff from top to bottom, again, as we've heard across today. Transportation, nutrition, H R, contracts, special ed, continuing ed, athletics, extracurriculars, before and after care for all those who need school or need service on day that the school's not running. All of these things are just the beginning of what will need to change were the board to approve this plan. I believe from the date of that vote, it would leave a little less than five months to get these changes firmly in place before the start of school. Mr. Perry can correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, you're correct.
One thing that stood out to me in all the homework Mr. Stecker gave us to the, the committee interviews were various interviews with other districts who have implemented a hybrid plan. Each one of these interviews said that if they could go back and change anything, they would have taken more time to implement the switch to a four-day schedule. While I personally do not think this is the right move for BA public schools, that's subjective. What is fact, however, is that implementing these changes in a less than five-month period will be significantly more challenging than taking a transitional school year to do so. My recommendation to the board is that if a calendar, a hybrid calendar is approved, it's approved for the 26, 27 school year rather than the 25, 26 school year upcoming. And speaking again with Mr. Stecker and other, others on our committee, it seems the primary goal of the hybrid calendar is to improve recruitment and retention of the faculty and staff, a noble goal. I believe that the delay of the implementation to 26, 27 will not impede that goal in the slightest. Those making decisions about their BA public schools employment will be baking this news into their thinking almost immediately and the staff will be able to get more adequate, will be able to more adequately plan and implement the strategies to make sure these transitions go much more smoothly, which is only to the benefit of staff, students, and their families. No one is harmed, nothing is lost by taking our time. Ever since you and I were in school, we've been reminded by our teachers and our parents to take our time, to be thorough, to double-check our work. Our Rosewood teachers, who we love year after, year after year, continue to tell my son and daughter the same thing. I encourage the board to take that policy here as well. Why rush when other districts have told us to take our time, districts who have been in our own shoes? We lose nothing, but we gain the ability to put something in place that all Broken Arrow citizens can be proud of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Well stated.
Well said. Next speaker, or final speaker is Taylor Goff. Is that correct?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Taylor Goff, like you said, and I am a mother of a Broken Arrow special needs student. It sounds like now, after I've heard everyone else speak, I'm hitting on some kind of high points, so sorry for my repetitive, but I'd also like to open your eyes to some other considerations. Childcare being my top concern with the four-day hybrid week and also with educational regression and the well-being of my child and other students that's enrolled in Broken Arrow. In the last board meeting and also tonight, I have heard that childcare was brought up numerous times being the top concern. For myself, this is already an issue. My son is not able to attend before and after care because he's not potty-trained due to him being disabled. So we have that problem. I have to take a 30-minute lunch break, so I accommodate my work schedule every day to make sure I can get him to the bus and off the bus. Days that we have virtual P D, school breaks, find childcare for my normal child is hard. It's just that much harder for my special needs child. I have provided, I don't know if they. for my special needs child. I have provided, I don't know if they gave you the documentation, there is a local childcare center here in Broken Arrow that serves for those with disabilities. I had looked into doing the fall break camp with them, but it was going to cost me $400 to do three days. I'm a single mother who is on an income just slightly above receiving a government assistance. I can't afford that every week and still pay bills and provide for my family, and my mom lives an hour and a half away, so I have no family up here. I purposely keep my residence in Broken Arrow School District, because when it comes to special education, when it comes to special education, you're the best. You are the best that's around. My son has made major progress last year. He is starting to firm words, which typically means him singing Five Little Monkeys. Due to his major progress, we have to redo his IEP. I get to do his IEP tomorrow, because he met all his goals last year. His teacher and Perez and all the other school personnel at the elementary he's at know what regression I have endured prior to coming to Broken Arrow. He experienced educational, emotional, and health regression from an individual who was supposed to teach him, care for him, and properly communicate to me about him. A four-day week calendar could greatly jeopardize my son's progress due to an outside caregiver hindering his ability, taking advantage of him, letting him sit in his solo diapers, and get aggressive with him simply because he doesn't understand. We all fear for our child being mistreated in the hands of those who should be loving and nurturing. Statistics show that children of disabilities experience neglect, physical, sexual, and emotional abuse at considerably higher rates than those of normal children. My son unfortunately has already experienced that abuse in the hands of professionals prior to him being here at Broken Arrow Schools. It's not only special needs kids who experience it, it's all, all of our kids of all kinds of backgrounds and cultures and education levels. If you remember during COVID, I know I had a few kids and families who I feared deeply about, you know, being home then when we were not in school. We wondered if they were getting, you know, neglected, if they were getting fed. Were they fearing for their lives on a daily basis? And during COVID, our child neglect and abuse cases went down, and my speculation is, it's because the kids were not in school. With that being said, you know, school personnels are mandatory reporters, and I fear that on, you know, if we go for a race of weeks, that may, you know, come about again. Ultimately, the decision relies on you, and if you could, please reconsider the four-day calendar and stay with a traditional calendar, because for some, school is all they have to look forward to. And I know for me, personally, I know my son is safe at Broken Arrow Schools, and he receives an amazing outstanding education with the Special Education Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
All right. Next item on the agenda will be the general consent item, 15 through 44. Any discussion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Got a motion in second. Please call the roll.
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, 45. Hey, Ms. Eniff.
Good evening again. Seeking your approval tonight to set the time, date, and place of a special board meeting to sell 29 million of taxable general obligation bonds. Just as a reminder to the board, this is our annual spring bond sale that goes to fund annual allocations and our lease revenue bond payments. The potential date that we are looking at are February 11th, 12th, 13th, 19th, or 20th. And just a reminder, that is a special noon board meeting, so we can conduct it while the markets are open.
You said January?
February.
February?
I can always do Tuesday, so if anybody's available, February 11th?
I'm available. The 11th?
February 11th.
February 11th at noon. Does that work?
We'll make it work.
Ms. Taylor? Noon. Mr. Perry will buy you lunch. Mr. Cockrell, is that good for you?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So we'd like to make the recommendation for noon at 11 o'clock?
I make a motion that we set the date and time for February 11, 2025, at noon. I'll second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor? Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Ms. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Ms. Eniff.
Seeking your approval to approve the adoption of resolution for providing leasing of certain real property to the Tulsa County Industrial Authority. This is in conjunction with our upcoming lease revenue bond transaction with the authority. I do want to thank Mr. Ryan McDonald for being here tonight, representing Stephen H. McDonald, who is helping facilitate the details of this sale. So seeking your approval tonight. This is funding the projects for our auditorium and classroom additions at the elementary schools.
Awesome. Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Sorry, such a long board meeting for you tonight.
Clarity. Next item, Ms. Eniff.
Last item is seeking your approval for the adoption of resolution for providing subleasing certain real property from the authority.
Entertainer motion.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Eniff. Next item, Mr. Leach.
Good evening. Tonight, I recommend for your approval Amendment Number Two to the Contract with Magnum Construction for the Fence and Security Project at the high school campus. This amendment brings the guaranteed maximum price to $2,339,239. I also request authorization for the Director of Construction Services to approve or disapprove changes to the trade contracts within the GMP. All bidding was conducted pursuant to the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act, and the cost of the district will be paid from the GO bond fund.
Mr. Leach, was there additional cost? Is that why this is changed?
So the project was split into two pieces.
Oh, okay.
We split the fence, because that was merely zoning review issue with the city of Broken Arrow, and then the second part is the security building and the security vestibule.
Okay. Thank you for the clarity. Any questions, discussion?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Good evening, President Allen, Mr. Perry, members of the board. I would like to recommend for your approval the bid for the District Lawn Maintenance Services, the bid for the HBAC unit replacement project at Oliver Middle School, Division Air Services, in the amount of $162,300. All bidding was conducted pursuant to the Oklahoma Competitive Bidding Act and will be paid for with bond funds.
Questions?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Next item, Mr. Moore.
Good evening. I'm so glad I get to go last.
Best for last. Best for last.
Tonight, I'm seeking your approval to add air conditioning units to five new buses. The cost would be a total of $51,645 to Ross Transportation, and will be paid from transportation funds. This air conditioning was not included when we did the bidding last year. That was an oversight on our part, so this is correcting that.
How many of our buses do not have air conditioning? Or percentage, you don't have given a amount?
I believe all but two of our special needs buses have air conditioning, and then none of our regular ed buses have air conditioning.
So these will be the first regular buses?
These will be the first regular ed buses, yeah.
You're going to beat each other up, try to get on that thing.
We're going to-
Going to have a bid process.
I see some money to be made there, possibly, so. There we go. That's great.
Make a motion to approve. I'll second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Moore. Next item is new business we have tonight. Next item will be to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Motion in second. Please call the roll.
Ms. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Cockrell?
Yes.
Mr. Rulet?
Yes.
Mr. Denton?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Thank you.